Going to go ahead and call this September 2nd, 2025, meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order. Thanks, everyone, for coming this evening in person. We also have some folks online who are attending, so thank you as well. Just for the record, Councilor Fury is excused this evening. We will start with our Pledge of Allegiance. And Ryan Purdy, do you want leading us tonight?
(inaudible)
Thank you, Ryan. We'll move on to communications from the public. We do have four public hearings advertised for this evening under Item 6 of our agenda. So if you're here to speak to those individual public hearings, please wait until I call those hearings. Anything in addition you'd like to present or discuss with the council now would be your opportunity. And your name and address for the record, please, at the microphone up front. Any public comment this evening?
Yes, my name is Andrew Bing. I live on 358 Bonita Circle. And I was just talking with the chief as Whitefish Avenue is now open all the way through and connecting to Shiloh. People are using it, and they're really speeding down that road. So they're ignoring whatever speed limit might be posted. And also, down on Shiloh, it's marked there's no parking on both sides of the street, but nothing for Whitefish Ave. So there's an inconsistency.
Okay. We'll follow up. Thanks, Andrew. Who's next?
Good evening, council. As promised, as I am a woman of my word. There is our current sign. Okay, I'm going to read a poem because I saw that you began your evening with litigation meeting. So I'm just going to read a poem. "For Whom the Bell Tolls" by John Donne. No man is an island entire of itself. Each is a piece of the continent, a part of the main. If a clod be washed away by the sea, Europe is the less, as well as if a promontory were, as well as if a manor of thine own or of thine friends were. Each man's death diminishes me, for I am involved in mankind. Therefore, send not to know for whom the bell tolls. It tolls for thee. Good luck in the litigation.
Who's next?
Hi, my name's Marty Brandt. I'm at 575 Armory Road. I submitted a letter already, but it came a little bit last minute, so I'm just following up with a comment. I'm here to ask for a childcare option for the September 16th through 17th visioning sessions that have been set for the land use portion of the growth policy. Thanks also to Allen and to the Community Development Board for getting those sessions on the books. I'm really excited to participate. I know a lot of other working parents are excited and hopeful to participate as well, but childcare is a huge barrier to being able to come to these meetings. So having that provided would be really helpful in getting a lot of different voices here and represented. I put a bunch of different options in my letter, or some kind of ideas and ways I could help. I know a bunch of childcare professionals. Anyone would want to talk to me, we could work that out. I know there's some spaces downstairs that have nice, like, screen setups. We could set up a movie. I myself would be willing to volunteer the day that I can't attend to help. I have some friends who'd be willing to do the same. So yeah, my door is open, my phone number is there, my email address is there. So yeah, please reach out. I may or may not be able to stay till the end. It looks like kind of a busy night. So all my info is there, once again. So that would be a huge asset for us to have. Thank you.
Thanks, Marty. Appreciate the letter as well.
Hi, Mallory Phillips, 937 Kalispel Ave. And I want to second what Marty was saying. I think that's a great idea. As someone who sits on the Community Development Board, I think as many ways that we can break down barriers to encourage people to show up to these live and in-person meetings. I know that we have online ability to engage with these growth policy meetings. But I do think that having people show up in person, one, helps kind of, they become more invested in the whole process as a whole. And two, it's very educational to be there in person. And so any ways that we can get people there, I think is great. And then that kind of feeds into my next comment. So as you guys are familiar, there was some frustration around how the board handled the Economic Development Chapter early on in May. I have gotten feedback from people in my community who are younger, who are workers, who are renters, about going to the land use visioning sessions. There's some concern that if they show up, if they take the time out of their day, if they show up, will their voices actually be listened to? My experience on the Economic Development, or on the Community Development Board, I don't often feel listened to. And with the way that the Economic Development Chapter was handled, and then when it came back through council, and it was largely adopted with the same edits that came through in May, a lot of people I talked to were very frustrated that the board really did not listen to public comments. And so anything that the city council can do to emphasize to the board on what their role is and what it means for people to come to these visioning sessions, and then respect staff when they take what is said during these visioning sessions, and not pick it apart, because that's what I've really experienced on the board, is they pick staff's analysis apart. And I'm not the expert. I am not a planning staff. And so I look to planning staff as the experts. And I have been kind of dismayed at how staff has been treated. And again, how people in my community, right, I'm just one section of the community. But I've gotten a lot of feedback that they feel like their public comments don't matter, and their voices are being stamped out. So thank you.
Thanks, Mallory. Further public comment tonight? Any volunteer boards from the audience? How about the council? Not seeing any. We'll move on to our consent agenda. You do have the minutes enclosed in the packet from August 18th. I'd entertain a motion. Steve?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
They're seconded.
Second.
Seceded by Councilor Sweeney. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. And that motion does carry unanimously, which brings us to our first public hearing of the evening, which would be Item 6A, consideration of a request from Kettle Mountain LLC for a conditional use permit to operate a bar in the existing Kimosabe retail store located at 20 Spokane Avenue. And the property is Zone WB3, which is our general business district. Welcome.
Good evening. Hope you guys are doing well. Are you able to hear me on the mic?
Yeah, great.
So this evening's project is a request for a CUP to utilize a full liquor license for a bar lounge as part of an already permitted existing western wear business in downtown Whitefish. In 2019, the Planning Board approved a CUP for a winery at 20 Spokane Avenue, the same address as the applicant today. Following that approval, the commercial space operated as a winery for a period of time, thereby activating the conditional use permit, which now runs with the land in perpetuity. However, the current proposal involves a bar lounge use, which is classified differently under the zoning code. As such, a new CUP is required to proceed with the proposed use, as well as some background. Similarly, in 2021, the neighboring property formerly known as Stumptown Marketplace was approved for a beer wine operation from 8:00 to 2:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Was there allowed business hours within Existing land use, the subject property is a commercial building with four total commercial units. Adjacent uses and zonings are commercial from the northwest and south. Zone is WB3. To the east is a school, the middle school. We conducted public noticing through adjacent landowner mailing, as well as posting a sign on the property, emailing the advisory agencies, posting the entire application on the city website, as well as posting the public hearing dates on the Whitefish pilot. As of today, one public comment has been received in opposition of the project. When evaluating the criteria for conditional use permits, staff have made the following findings. One, use complies with the growth policy designation, commercial core. Two, all zoning standards are being met or will be met with conditions of approval. Finding three, there is adequate usable land area. Site access meets emergency standards, and there are no environmental constraints. Finding four, the business will be located in existing building that was built, meeting city standards. Number five, public services and facilities are adequate. Finding six, noise, dust, smoke, odor, and other environmental nuisances are not expected as part of the request. And finally, for finding number seven, the project is compatible with the neighborhood and community because the proposed use will be with an existing commercial building, which met architectural review standards at the time of construction. The existing neighborhood is a mixture of commercial and residential uses, including nearby retail shops, dining establishments, as well as existing or prior existing uses of alcohol within each establishment. And the project appears consistent with the established community character. I know that there are some questions inherent with this site, since it is adjacent to the middle school. So I wanted to provide some of those Montana state laws as reference for you guys to ease the mind on how the state will operate in conjunction with this. So it was found that the section that Montana State Code and its regulations for the 600-foot prohibit of licensing near schools or churches was found to not be, was, this property would be exempt from this regulation because the physical address of the premise proposed for licensing is designated as the same street, is not designated as the same street as the physical address of the place of school. So since the middle school's address, 600 East Second Street, and the physical address of the property is 20 Spokane, the three-part test that's commonly referred to is not met, and it's okay to proceed forward with its licensing. We held our first public hearing August 21st. The draft minutes were attached in its packet. I know that some of the audio cut out, so we do apologize for that. The Whitefish Community Development Board met on the August 21st meeting and ultimately recommended denial. The motion passed on a five to one with Phillips voting in opposition. In making their decision, the Community Development Board found the following findings. Ultimately, there was one change, which was finding number seven. I had detailed some of this in the transmittal, but I will review that again. They changed finding seven to state the project is not compatible with the neighborhood and community because as a retail chain that sells merchandise and liquor is not consistent with the established community character. While the proposed motion by the Community Development Boards denied this, staff continues to recommend approval and offers a new proposed motion that supports the staff findings of fact. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Thanks, Lauren. Any questions for Lauren on her staff report? Frank?
Lauren, how is this, what are the conditions that are being placed on this CUP?
So I believe it's the standard four that are applied to most conditional use permits. It's that must be in compliance with the plans submitted as they were received. Any amendments or deviations would require further review by the city council. We would require that onsite lighting must be dark sky compliant, as well as all new signage would need to obtain a permit from the Planning and Building Office, as well as finally, the conditional use permit is valid for 18 months and shall terminate unless commenced of the authority activity has begun.
No limitations on hours or anything else of operation?
No, not at this time.
Thank you.
Further questions? Steve?
Is there anything operating in that block currently that sells alcohol?
You know, I can't think of anything.
I know it comes and goes. It's been a few different things here and there.
It has. And with those properties, the old Stumptown Marketplace, as well as the Jersey Boys, tomorrow, new business can move into those, get a beer wine license, and start operating without any further permitting that we need from us because of how CUPs run in perpetuity with the land.
With the land, okay. And you said that the Stumptown Marketplace, their hours of operation were until 2:00 a.m. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Rebecca?
Were they actually operating till 2:00 a.m.?
I can't say. I don't believe I was in town at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions for Lauren? Thanks, Lauren. Appreciate it. We did advertise for a public hearing on Item 6A of the agenda. I would first invite the applicant's representatives or applicant to address the council, if there's any additional comments.
Hello. My name is Hillary Gallagher, and I've been a Whitefish resident since 2017. And I'm just here to express my enthusiastic support for the approval of this liquor license as a local employee of Kimosabe. Step inside Kimosabe, and you'll meet a team of locals who love this town and are proud to be a part of something unique and lasting within it. Apart from one of their transplants, we know better than to call ourselves true locals. Our entire staff is made up of born and raised Flathead Valley residents. All of us have worked multiple jobs throughout the valley, and we can confidently say that Kimosabe has changed our lives for the better, personally and professionally. This job has given us opportunities to travel, expand our skills, and connect with people from all walks of life. Two of our employees were recently able to sign a lease and move back to Whitefish, something that they previously thought was out of reach. And we're not only very proud of what we do, we're deeply invested in the success of this business and in the future of our community. Kimosabe has truly been the most rewarding place I've ever worked. I love it so much. And when we opened, I was admittedly nervous, mostly about ending up on overheard Whitefish. So we understand the stereotypes, but we've been met with nothing but enthusiasm and support from day one, honestly, and it's been a very pleasant surprise. The store brings something truly different to Whitefish. We've hosted birthday parties for long-term residents, and wedding parties and celebrations for out-of-town guests. Time and time again, people walk into the space and leave saying how much they love the vibe and the experience, even if they walked in as skeptics. Kimosabe is family-friendly. It's community-oriented. On any given day, you'll find a dog lounging in the boot room or a stroller parked by the hat bar. The addition of a liquor license would simply enhance what we already offer. It would allow us to create more memorable experiences for locals and visitors alike, and support future collaborations with other local businesses and events. We're located on a street that has seen a lot of turnover, and so we're proud to bring consistent, positive foot traffic to the area, and believe we're helping create a sense of permanence in a space that has needed it for a while. So thank you for your time and consideration, and I hope you'll support this next step for a business that does have roots in Aspen, but is committed to Whitefish, values the people who live here and work here, and is excited to continue growing in a way that benefits the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Hillary.
I'm not gonna be able to top that. I'm Bobby Kunkel, Cleveland, Ohio, in 20 Spokane. I just really want to thank you. We've been in business now for over a year. We had a handwritten note from one of your local realtors that was sent to my sister, saying that we'd be a perfect fit for Whitefish. We came in one day and decided we do love this town. We love it a lot. We love it so much, and the sales have been beyond our projections. I think everything's going really well. And this will only add to the value we can provide to the core city. So I just really want to thank you for having us. And I want to leave with a quote right out of your master plan. "One of the primary objectives of the downtown master plan is to preserve and enhance the special character and qualities of downtown Whitefish. One way of achieving this objective is to encourage unique, one-of-a-kind retail establishments. If please come in our store, I think we are one of the most unique retail establishments in the country." Thank you for having us.
Thanks, Bobby. Further comments from the applicants? I'll take public comment, general public comment at this point. Any public testimony? Michelle, anyone online?
I put in the chat, and nobody has responded, but I'll ask again. For those who want to address the council regarding WCUP 2505, please raise your hand, and we will call upon you.
Thank you. Michelle, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for preferably a motion one way or another, followed by discussion. Giuseppe?
I forgot the number, but I move to approve the CUP as defined by the staff's requirements.
Item 6A of the agenda?
Thank you.
Is there a second to the motion?
For purposes of discussion, if nothing else, I'll second.
Seceded by Councilor Sweeney. Giuseppe, would you like to speak to your motion? Discussion? Rebecca?
Yep. I was at the Community Development Board, so we've been through this, but I've done more homework since that time. So there are 14 other businesses on that block, and none of them currently serve alcohol. We've, from what I can tell, we've never had an all-beverage license on that block. And it's not because we haven't had alcohol on the block. It's just that we've had beer and wine available on that block. But the previous winery was able to sell wine because they had a wine and beer license, and so they manufactured it and sold it there. My hesitancy in approving an all liquor license in that location is that the hours go from 8:00 to 2:00. It travels with the property, not the business. I have no problem whatsoever with the business model. I think it's a beautiful store. This is Montana, of course. People like cowboy hats and cowboy boots, you know. It's more that we're changing the character of that particular section of downtown, which is vulnerable with children across the street. The other people that have licenses to serve hard liquor and stay open until 2:00 a.m. don't do that either. But when you approve something like this, we don't know who's going to sell a business, who's going to expand a business into the adjacent property, which is now for lease. I just think it's not in character with what's currently there, and it actually changes the whole potential -- I don't know if I could call it safety, but when you're, we have a lot of bars in town, and they can be pretty busy. And so I'm voting against it for that reason.
Thanks, Rebecca. Additional comments from the council? Frank?
I've got a question for Sam and Angie. Am I on or off? I can't tell.
The light's on. You're on.
I'm on. Good.
I'm on.
I don't have a light, so. In any case, my question to Dave or Angie, if this CUP is conditioned on hours of operation, how does that apply with respect to the granting of the CUP should a successor business come in there? And can we do that?
Yeah, I mean, you guys fully have the right to set hours of operation on there. I mean, they did outline hours of operation in their application, which I think was 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. You know, I don't know if they do special events where they're catering something, and they have a wedding party, and they might want to stay open later. I mean, you might certainly ask them if they'd be open to having hours of operation, you know, set as part of their CUP.
Right. I guess my rhetorical, or the question is, is to the extent the CUP goes with the property, the liquor license is personal to the business.
Correct.
And so the liquor license isn't grandfathered into that facility, correct?
Correct. Not unless they sold it and to somebody that wanted to operate in that same facility.
Right. But the hours of operation, if we were to set them, as we have for any number of operations within the city when we recruit CUPs, that would be enforceable with respect to liquor operations in that facility. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I just saw a head nod from Bobby, the owner, indicating that they'd be amenable to 11:00 to 8:00, in terms of hours of operation.
Okay. Well, with that said, I would, Giuseppe, with your permission, I would move for a friendly amendment to add additional condition for the CUP, that the hours of operation shall be limited to 11:00 to 8:00 p.m. on a daily basis.
I'll take that as a friendly amendment. Is there a second? Seceded by Councilor Quinell. Further discussion?
Does Giuseppe have to agree?
No, he doesn't have to.
I don't think so.
Could we clarify with the owners of the business whether or not they do any evening events that would go beyond 8:00 p.m.? I mean, that seems kind of early.
You could certainly acknowledge the applicant and ask that question.
What?
Yes, please. Bobby, would you mind stepping up, please?
So we're not technically a bar, and primarily, people come to eat dinner and then come to our bar, or they come to our bar and then they go eat dinner. Our girls don't want to stay past 8:00. So we're typically, 11:00 to 8:00 is fine, because people are moving on to their next either dinner.
Even if it's a special event, like a wedding party, or, because I understand that you're using a catering license through the pen and queue, which allows you to use their liquor license as well. But are you, I mean, you haven't gone beyond 8:00 p.m. on events to date? on events to date?
We, no, we actually haven't. We've had a few private events. I think the latest we've been there is 9:00 p.m. Again, it is more of a retail experience, so even when we have private events, it's for people, I mean, they're still shopping and in the store. It's really, we don't have seating. I mean, it's not like a bar that you would like hang out in for multiple hours. So the latest I've worked has been like 9:30, and that's after finishing the event and cleaning everything up and all that. So we're not really a late-night establishment, but.
While I have you both up here, do you have any plans to expand into the adjacent building? Not at this time? Okay.
Thank you. Further comments or questions, or I would entertain a vote on what will be added, Condition Number 5, limiting the hours of operation from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We'll vote on that, Condition Number 5 amendment first. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like, sign. And I will vote in favor of the amendment, which adds Condition Number 5.
That was not a tie, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, so that does pass, correct? Does not, I'm sorry. So that does fail for lack of vote, which brings us back to our original motion for approval. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like, sign. Are you voting in favor or against?
I'm voting in favor.
Let's, let's get the call out again. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like, sign, and the motion does carry on a three-to-two vote. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
You got it.
We'll move on to Item 6B of our agenda, and this will be our second public hearing of the evening. Consideration of a request from Rocky Mountain Car Wash on behalf of True North Partners LLC for a conditional use permit to construct and operate a seven-day bay car wash located on commercial Lot 1 of Snowy Mount subdivision. The property is Zone WB2, which is our secondary business district. Dave?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. So, a few years back, we amended the zoning in the WB2 line to...
No, my mic was not on. Back in, I think it was around 2020, we amended the code in the WB2 district to require a conditional use permit for automobile services. That was after the town pump went in. In this particular location, it's the site of the former Big Mountain Thrift Store. It's newly platted as of your guys' approval of the consent agenda, where the Snowy Mountain final plant went into effect. So it's Lot 1 of that subdivision. There's another lot between that and Shiloh Avenue, but this does abut Highway 93, but the access into this site is off of the newly-created Geyser Road, which is the new road that's been, had us blocked off, but recently constructed there as part of that, getting the infrastructure in for the final plot. So this business would be a car wash of seven bays, four self-service, and three automatic wash bays, as well as some self-serve vacuum stations. It's fully within the WB2 zone and surrounded by other lots that are all WB2. In reviewing a conditional use permit, there's certain things that we look at. We did put out a notice to all the adjacent property owners and put notices in the paper. We did receive three emails in opposition to it, and then one comment from MDT that just to coordinate with them. As far as the review that we do, is it compliant with the growth policy? There's several things in the growth policy and our Highway 93 corridor plan that talk about improving the visual character of the built environment, incentivizing infill development. This project does comply with the growth policy, it is consistent with other uses in the WB2 zoning district. As far as the zoning regulations, the site plan that they submitted does meet our zoning requirements and will be further reviewed at the time of building permit. There are a 20-foot setback in the front of the building, which would be off of that newly-constructed road, and then a 30-foot setback off of Highway 93. It does meet the height requirements. The building's oriented correctly for multi-family and non-residential building standards. It meets our off-street parking requirements. They're putting a walkway into the sidewalk on Highway 93 to meet our pedestrian and bicycle accommodations. They're also required to install two bicycle parking spaces. And then, so in general, it all complies with our zoning regulations. As far as the site suitability, as I mentioned, access is not directly off the highway. They did do, or submitted a copy of a parking study that was done for a similar project. Because it's less than 200 vehicle trips per day, we did not require a parking or traffic study to be done. But however, what, they had an engineer review the other parking study that was for a similar business, and they noted that, you know, how many vehicle trips it would be based on the size of this location and that the impacts that would happen from any traffic there. But because it is, access is to an arterial street rather than directly to the highway, which would be Whitefish Avenue and the light at J.P. Road, we have no concerns about traffic. Fencing and screening requirement, we did add a condition of the trash facility being closed per our requirements. The quality and functionality of the development deals with the site design issues. Again, it's currently a vacant lot. That building that was on there was removed. Sewer and water are available to the site. Public Works has no concerns about the sewer or the water usage of this site. They may have to do a stormwater plan if the impervious area exceeds 10,000 square feet. That's one of the standards in our Public Works Engineering Standards. We don't anticipate any impact specifically to the neighborhood. It is surrounded by commercial uses currently. There may be some future residential, but it would be far enough away that it's unlikely to have any impacts. Of course, any car wash, if it's open 24/7, there might be some sounds from the car wash facility and from the vacuuming facilities. They do have, the automatic wash machine is a silenced version that they're planning on putting in. As far as the context of the existing neighborhood, I mean, currently it's next to what was an automobile sales business, so it fits in with the neighborhood. Staff did recommend approval of it with nine conditions. This did go to the Community Development Board on August 21st. The Community Development Board unanimously recommended approval with an additional friendly condition. And so the conditions of approval that they added, number 10, was a silenced dryer system and best feasible water preservation recycling technology will be integrated. And they had some discussion about how water would be recycled on the site and what that could be done in that regard. Other conditions of approval, applicant, apply with all fire codes. Again, as I mentioned, the engineered stormwater plan, if it's over 10,000 square feet. Minimum of two locking bicycle racks. On-site lighting must be dark-skay compliant. The refuge location has to be screened by a side obscuring enclosure or landscaping. They must comply with the landscaping chapter. The Architectural Review Committee shall have approval prior to submitting an application. Because there's more than a number of these businesses, it does fall under our Formula Business Standards, which are allowed in the B2. However, the building design has to deviate from the corporate architecture, and so they'll have to submit a plan that's different than their other locations. Although being a car wash, there's only so much that they can do to change the building design, at least the shape of that. So the staff does continue to recommend approval. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions for Dave? We'll start with Steve, and then Ben.
Dave, in the, in the packet, there's a letter from MDT. Whatever the concern was, is that cleared up?
Yeah, I don't think they realized that it wasn't gonna be accessing straight onto Highway 93, that it was coming off of that new road, so I don't believe there's any concerns. Yeah, they thought maybe they had to get an approach permit or something to connect to Highway 93.
Ben?
My question has to do with the added condition, number 10. It says, "A silenced dryer system and best feasible water preservation and recycling technology will be integrated." Feels a little vague to me. I was just wondering what staff's opinion is on this condition.
You know, I think that's something you could ask the applicant. You know, something that was discussed kind of at length at the Community Development Board meeting. You know, it's somewhat vague as far as the water recycling. I mean, they do, as part of their description of it, they do recycle part of the water that's, that's used for the, you know, the final spotless rinse. A lot of that water can't really be recycled because it's dirty and has to go through a, you know, a cleaning system, but, and that's pretty standard for most car washes, is quite a bit, it just goes back into the wastewater treatment system to be cleaned in that. I personally didn't have a big issue with that condition. I don't think the applicant did, but you can certainly ask them.
Okay. And do, does our noise ordinance adequately cover, in the event this thing is too loud and disrupting the neighbors or, or something like that?
You know, I mean, we do have a disturbing the peace ordinance. It's generally, you know, limited to, you know, people doing things rather than a business. And again, I mean, there's several other car washes in town. They all make a little bit of noise. I mean, I think if there was, you know, residential property directly, you know, next door, they have cited this as far away from Shiloh Avenue as possible. You know, the other businesses around them are offices, I mean, currently, and I don't know what that Wolf Auto's going to be now, but certainly has been an auto dealership at that location. So, you know, we have less concerns about that. I know I have heard some complaints from the car wash that's behind what was Sunriff Brewery, just because some of those buildings are so close, that they can, you know, kind of hear it with the windows open and things like that. But, but, you know, we don't have that, as many concerns like that for this particular location. And also, the highway noise from Highway 93 is gonna far exceed the decibels of any car wash there. Highways are one of the loudest things that you can live by, and it's the noise of all the vehicles and the trucks and everything else is gonna far exceed any car wash noise.
Fair enough. And is, are the other car washes in town also available to be open 24/7?
They are. We don't have a limitation on that. The other car washes didn't require a conditional use permit. They just needed a building permit, so they, none of those have conditions on them at all.
Sorry for, why is this one different?
Because the City Council changed the code for the WB2 and required all automobile uses to be a conditional use permit, including automobile sales, gas stations, and car washes falls under an automobile service.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Dave? Frank?
Dave, I noticed that there was no screening requirement for the business from the residential uses that are right behind it. Is there a reason for that, or are we not requiring that?
Currently aren't really any residential uses right behind. I mean, there's a new subdivision that's gonna be constructed. There's a vacant commercial lot in between that subdivision and this building. There is a landscaping requirement, but there's currently is no direct residential use. We only have screening requirements if something's adjacent to either residential zoning or an existing residential use that's right next door.
So we don't have that applying here?
Yeah, yeah. Does not apply here.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on Item 6B. I would invite the applicant, our applicant's representative, first. Sir?
Hello, my name is Taylor Casparic. I'm with Performance Engineering. We're the owner and applicant's agent on this project. First off, I'd like to thank David and the staff for reviewing this, and also the council for your time this evening. Wanted to start off with a little bit of background on the project. As David noted, it is a seven-bay car wash. Of those seven bays, four of them will be self-service, with three of those being auto bays. These will be auto bays to where the equipment actually moves around the vehicle, rather than the vehicle moving through, through the, the car wash bay, just to make sure everybody's thinking of the car wash in the same light. The layout and the location of this car wash has been specifically selected largely, as David noted, there are no residential uses around this subject lot. And before we get to any residential uses, there's another commercial lot, a pond lot that serves the subdivision, and then Shiloh Road. So we are set back from any adjacent residential uses by quite a distance, largely which feeds into a lot of the noise concerns that, that may be put forth. Further to that, I feel like this project directly aligns with both the growth policy and the WB2 zoning. As noted in the growth policy along the highway district, it promotes auto-oriented uses, which obviously a car wash is an auto-oriented use. We fully intend to follow the Architectural Review Committee standards in making this car wash different from the rest of Rocky Mountain Car Wash's locations, and making it cohesive with the Whitefish surrounding areas and surrounding buildings. To address some of the concerns that both council have had, public has had, and as well as the Community Development Board, traffic for this site, it was referenced that a traffic study from another Rocky Mountain Car Wash facility was submitted with the application. In that study, it's anticipated that there's about 200 vehicles per day. At that location, it is actually a larger facility, so there's five self-service bays, three automatic bays, so we're anticipating that it would be 200 or less at this facility. In addition to that, I would just like to point out that car washes are generally capture facilities, in the sense that we're not generating all 200 of those vehicles coming to the site. In large part, it's gonna be people that are passing by on Highway 93, going to work, coming from work, coming into downtown. We're gonna be capturing those vehicles rather than generating them, which other commercial uses might do that would go in the same location. Additionally, at the Community Development Board meeting, there was concern raised about left-out onto Highway 93, and totally understand that. This, this location has been selected for ease of access off of Highway 93, you know, not trying to promote additional traffic coming through residential neighborhoods or whatnot that might disturb the local, local residents. But in addition to that, this facility is, will be located close to the newly-constructed Shiloh Road, that has access down to J.P. Road, should a left-out be needed and traffic be backing up coming out of the internal road, which is Geyser. Lastly, on the traffic item, just with the site layout that we've got put forth, there can be 24 vehicles on-site, either in the bay or queued to be in the bay at any one time. So not, I think that we've got a great site layout that would prevent any queuing from backing up onto the public roadways, because we don't anticipate that there'd be more than 24 vehicles at any one time coming to the car wash. As far as noise goes, again, we've strategically laid this out. The auto, auto bays are oriented towards Highway 3, where one of your larger or louder noise generators are gonna be, which is the blowers from those auto bays. Putting those closer to the highway is gonna reduce that, or increase that distance to any local residential uses. In addition to that, the other louder generator at a car wash facility is the vacuums. The turbine for those vacuums is planned to be enclosed in an auxiliary building, which will really help dampen that noise concern. And then, lastly, the, the friendly condition that was added during the Community Development Board meeting, as far as a silenced dryer system, is agreeable from the owner's side of it. In relation to water and sewer, did reach out to Mr. Craig Workman, Public Works Director. There was a concern that was raised at the Community Development Board meeting as far as the capacity of the water and sewer, where it sounds like that is not, not a concern, or at least with the proposed car wash use. And then, lastly, the, the owner and owner, Riley Irwin, is also here and can speak to this, but they do already use a recycling technology, and they're currently looking into if they're more robust system, would be feasible at this location as well. But to Councilmember Davis's note, it is kind of a vague, vague condition, but we also don't have all the answers for that at this point. So we'd be happy to answer any of the council's questions at this point, and also turn it over to Riley to answer any questions.
Thanks, Taylor. Any questions for Taylor?
I just had one. It's more of a global question about water conservation practices for car washes. What percentage of the water that's actually used is recycled?
I would say it widely varies by car wash.
What would you envision for this site could be possible?
I'll probably defer to Riley on that one. I'm more on the civil and the land use planning side of it than on the internal.
I'm just more curiosity than anything. Thanks, Taylor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Riley from Rocky Mountain Car Wash. I want to thank you guys for your time today. I basically just want to give you guys a background on our, our business and why we want to come to Whitefish. We're a family-owned, family-operated business. My family and I have operated it for 25 years now. We take a lot of pride in the, the quality of service that we offer. This is our main business. It's our livelihood. It's not, you know, like a lot of other car wash operators use it as, you know, a passive income type of business. We, we, this is our... We, we, this is our only source of income, and in that, we take a lot of pride in the quality. We, you know, we keep a really clean facility. We take a lot of pride in a clean facility. We provide good service to the community. We hire local people to staff it. We take, we do a lot to make sure that our wash quality is good, and we take a lot of pride in fitting into the community as well. So, in that, obviously, we hire locals. We want to fit in, obviously, and so we're working through the architectural requirements right now. And I know you have questions on, obviously, the condition that was added there, the silenced dryer system. We're looking into that right now. We've, we've used it in the past. We had another location down in Wyoming that we used this on, and we had great success in terms of, we're actually make, able to make the dryer system quieter than the highway noise that we were adjacent to. In terms of water recycling, we do recycle part of our water in terms of, we use an RO machine, and in making reverse osmosis water, we always have reject water, and a lot of car washes just dump that down the drain because it's, it's pretty hard to produce a clean vehicle with that. So, what we do is we store it, and then we use it in earlier parts of the wash process, you know, for knocking off mud, stuff that you're not super concerned about necessarily the finish of the car at that point. And like Taylor said, we're looking into more robust options for water recycling right now, too.
Thank you. I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm open to any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Riley? Not seeing any. Thanks very much.
Thanks for your time.
You bet. I'll now open it up to general public comments.
Good evening. I'm Andrew Bing. Again, I live at 358 Benita Circle, which is right behind Les Schwab's, so I face out towards where the car wash is. When I came to the Community Development Board, I came because of the concern about how many car washes there already are inside of the city of Whitefish, and that this would make the fourth one or fifth one within less than a mile. My also concern was about the water. We have the highest water rates and sewer rates that I've ever seen in any place I've lived in 76 years, and all I can see is the amount of water going through a car wash and how much that'll raise the water rates and what it will do to the amount of water that was used. Subsequent to that, when I was at the Community Development Board and listening to the conversations that were going on, one of the questions that came up was, well, do we restrict the types of businesses because we have car washes, and we have four of them? And the answer was, no, we don't restrict jewelry stores. And I was going, wait a minute. Jewelry stores, we would want to have 100 of those, because each one of them would be different designers, different types, but not a car wash. And there's, the owner of the car wash that's directly across the street was talking about how it's his livelihood for the car wash and how it'll be detrimental. Then I was also out walking my dog and looking at Geyser Avenue, which is the street that they'll come off of, and when they were talking tonight about the cars would be coming in and it would be the last minute, oh, there's a car wash, let me turn in, they won't know about Shiloh Road or Whitefish Ave and the access to JP Road, so they're going to turn right back around and go back out on the 93. And I will tell you right now, I was against Whitefish Ave going through, because I also talked to the chief tonight about the speed limit that's going on it. But it's the only way to get to a left turn to get on the 93. Coming out of Acres Lane at 8:00 in the morning, you might as well sit there and drink your whole cup of coffee. You're not going to get out to make that left turn, and this is just going to add to it. And you've already got Les Schwab that's right there that's terrible to get out of and make a left turn, so that's my ideas. I just don't think it's a good idea for another car wash. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Further public testimony? Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Leah Doherty, and my address is 1812 Lacy Lane. I'm here tonight with my husband, Dennis Doherty, and also our children, Ozzy and Lola. Not only do we reside here in Whitefish, we're also the builders, the owners, and the operators of the Whitefish Superwash that the last gentleman was just referencing. It's literally directly across the street from the site where Rocky Mountain Car Wash wants your permission to build its new seven-bay car wash. This would be the 16th car wash for this very large northwest chain, if you permit it. I think we need to see the bigger picture here. The question Rocky Mountain Car Wash is asking you to decide tonight is actually kind of a microcosm and a perfect example of what's going on all around Whitefish right now. You must determine, will Whitefish maintain its original charm and its character moving forward, or will it become a carbon copy of so many other mountain resort towns? Should unimpeded growth continue unchecked, driven by people from outside our community who know little about Whitefish except for this could be a good place to make a buck? Or will you preserve this special place that we've known about for years that the rest of the U.S. is just discovering? Also, do your constituents expect you to preserve our unique small-town atmosphere that supports local business owners that live and work here, like we do? Or do they want you to greenlight projects by out-of-town firms? By Rocky Mountain's own words at the Community Development Hearing on August 21st, they're just here because they got a tip that Highway 93 would be a good spot for their 16th wash. As councilors, you must also ask yourself, do the people you represent want you to preserve Whitefish's water supply? I'm guessing from the one gentleman who spoke earlier, they do, which is already taxed by our current population growth rate of 28% since the year 2020? Do they expect you to carelessly give away that precious natural resource to an out-of-state firm to make money off a car wash the community doesn't need, didn't ask for, and is already oversaturated within this market? Now, I'll give you, it's not like it was before. When we first moved to Whitefish in 2013, it was pretty tough to wash your car. You could go to the Riverside Wash, but if you didn't want to wait in line, plug your coins into the machine and do it yourself, you had to drive all the way to Kalispell to go to the Blue Cow. Now, we saw an obvious need. We did some research, and we determined there was demand for another wash, especially for oversized self-serve bays, for large RVs, for trailers, horse trailers, boats, and the like. And there was also a big demand for automatic car wash bays if you didn't want to do it yourself, and also to wash off our muddy dogs after we've been on the Whitefish Trail. So, we took the plunge. We built the Whitefish Superwash, which we opened in 2021, our only wash, by the way. We made sure we designed a facility that met both current and future needs of the community, and we took care to do it with as little impact as possible on Whitefish's natural resources. I'm proud to say we currently recycle upwards of about 80% of the water that we use in one way or another. And we do this at a reasonable cost for our customers. Starting this fall, we'll offer a new membership program that will provide even better value for Whitefishians. Now, over the years, we put in a lot of blood, sweat, and tears to make this Superwash a success, and we're happy to share our success with the community. When our daughter played volleyball at Whitefish High School, we donated car wash gift cards to the team fundraisers, and we continue supporting the Bulldogs by donating, by donating to the Whitefish High School Booster Club, to Christmas fundraisers, and to Young Life Silent Auctions as well. Now, we hope to be a part of the community for years and to continue giving back and being involved in the fashion that we are. But if you approve a copycat car wash directly across the street from ours, that may not happen. We've been told by people in the car wash industry that Rocky Mountain can be ruthless, that they've come into communities in the past and driven out mom-and-pop operations like ours by underselling them in the short run, because they can take that loss because they're a large chain with several stores to spread it upon. Then they can raise prices once they're the only game in town and we're out of business. At the August 21 board hearing, the advisability of putting a nearly identical car wash across the street from an existing one was raised. Dave Taylor said, "It's okay because competition is good," and the city allows restaurants, art galleries, and car dealerships to open up next to each other all the time. Mr. Taylor said, "Car washes are no different." Respectfully, Mr. Taylor is wrong. Sure, an Italian and a Mexican restaurant can operate on the same street, just like a Ford and a GMC dealership can operate across from each other, because they sell different products. However, a McDonald's is never built across the street from another McDonald's, nor would the city allow a Ford dealership to go in right next to an existing Ford dealership. This is the situation we have here, and frankly, what Mr. Taylor says is routine doesn't and shouldn't happen, especially in a city that cares about what we look like. Mr. Taylor also made the bold assertion at that meeting that there's room for more car washes in Whitefish. Frankly, that's insulting. How does he know there's room? Has he seen our financials? I don't think so. And I'm pretty sure he hasn't seen the financials of the other two Whitefish, Whitefish car wash owners either. Now, throwing away around cliches like "competition is good" and "there's room for everyone" ignores the very real likelihood that it'll put at least one or two of our local car washes out of business should you allow this large chain in. Finally, there's another very large, perhaps even the biggest problem with granting Rocky Mountain, Rocky Mountain's conditional use permit. Another car wash would inevitably increase traffic on Highway 93 and impact all drivers, current and future, accessing Highway 93's businesses. Here's proof that this is a major problem. As was just referenced earlier, on August 5th, Montana's Department of Transportation flagged this stretch of Highway 93 as an area of concern with respect to its access management plan. Dennis has copies of this and can pass them out if you'd like to see them. Now, the state sent this letter to landowners on Highway 93 notifying us that they're conducting an access management study from Reserve Drive to Livermore Flats. They say the intent is to establish the number and location of accesses to each property abutting U.S. Highway 93 within access management plan limits. The state says its plan will be adopted by the Transportation Commission to guide future access development and alterations along Highway 93. Now, if the state is paying this kind of attention to the traffic that Highway 93 businesses and residences generate as drivers merge on and off of it, the city should pay at least as much attention as well. And in fact, Whitefish's 2019 engineering standards ensure there's a mechanism in place to monitor that traffic impact of new businesses. It requires that developments contributing 200 or more new vehicle trips must have a traffic impact study. This is not a suggestion. This is a legal requirement that business owners and the city must abide any time a new business brings 200 cars onto city streets. Rocky Mountain obviously knows about this requirement, and based on what we saw at the August 21 hearing, is trying to skirt its way around this requirement of doing an actual traffic impact study by presenting extrapolated and frankly, self-serving data. Rocky Mountain made it seem like it had done a traffic study for the proposed site, however, no such thing has been done. Now, we reviewed the staff report, WCUP 25-09 referenced at the hearing, and we noted that city staff appeared to have pretty much unquestioningly accepted the data and the information provided by Rocky Mountain and its engineer, performance engineering. Now, they presented a traffic impact memo, that is, performance engineering did, and a queuing analysis, which basically concluded that the impact of the new wash would be minimal and an actual traffic impact study is unnecessary. Now, the reason that I say that Rocky Mountain's data is superfluous is because it submitted only data based on general institutional knowledge and a December 2021 traffic impact study they did for a car wash they built in Laramie, Wyoming. To no surprise, Rocky Mountain's general knowledge and extrapolated data concluded that the Whitefish site would put only 184 more cars on our roads per day. Conveniently, that's just below the 200-vehicle threshold. Now, I ask you, what do any of these numbers have to do with the Whitefish site that you're passing judgment on? Is it more reasonable to accept numbers from a 2021 study of a proposed car wash in Wyoming as evidence of how many cars that the wash would put on Highway 93? Or is it more reasonable to accept real data from a real car wash that's actually been operating on Highway 93 since 2021? Well, here are the real numbers. So far in 2025, our car wash, which incidentally is smaller than what Rocky Mountain wants to build, averages 207 new vehicle trips per day. That doesn't include the vehicles driven in by people who want to come and wash their dogs, nor does it include the people that come to vacuum out their cars. So, does Rocky Mountain's conditional use permit request trigger the city of Whitefish's requirement that a traffic impact study be done? Absolutely. There's no question. Not only should a traffic impact study be done for the cars generated by the wash itself, but to be accurate, the study must consider data from nearby future commercial and residential lots as well. Only then can you get an actual, accurate picture of how additional traffic from the proposed wash would interact with additional vehicles generated by future projects. For example, there's now 24 residential lots planned for construction adjacent to the proposed car wash, the snowy mountain subdivision. Traffic from that and the existing and planned businesses next to the proposed wash and across Highway 93 must be taken into account as well. At our car wash daily, we see customers, especially tourists and big RVs, towing boats and trailers that don't know the area, attempting to merge directly onto Highway 93. Approving a car wash across the street from us will only compound this hazard, since customers will be trying to merge onto Highway 93 from both sides of the road now, going in both directions. Remember, these are staggered intersections, so traffic controls are impossible as it stands, although the state's study might change that. Maybe we should wait and see what the state has to say about that. Do we need different traffic controls where all of these accesses onto and off of 93 are happening? Maybe we're going a little too fast for this. I can tell you that it took us two years to get the approvals that we needed to get the car wash built, and now all of a sudden, it seems like this thing is just tickety-boo, it's clicking right through before anyone's really stopping and thinking about all of these things. Now, Rocky Mountain tried to allay this concern at the planning meeting by saying its customers wouldn't access its wash from Highway 93, but from this new secondary access road that's not yet completed. Well, unless there's actually a barricade being built that's not going to let you get back onto Highway 93, common sense and experience tells us that drivers, especially tourists unfamiliar with the area, will always take the quickest, shortest way to get back on the main road, and they're sure as heck not going to wait in a long line. This is exactly why the Montana Department of Transportation is studying road access issues as development increases along Highway 93. Rocky Mountain also says the city shouldn't worry about the traffic it will generate, because if they don't build there, well, someone else will. Well, I'm pretty sure that a business that makes its money based on the number of cars that can pass through its doors will generate more traffic than, say, Wright's Furniture just down the street. What the city needs to keep sight of is that when insufficient or inaccurate traffic studies are done, the city runs a liability risk with respect to the traffic accidents, pedestrian hazards, and other problems it may make. Liability-wise, should council grant Rocky Mountain its permit based on a flimsy traffic report with extrapolated numbers from a Wyoming car wash, when real numbers exist here in our city that discredit that data, then that action could be viewed as hasty, unreasonable, given the evidence exists showing that. This is especially true when the state is already studying Highway 93 access because of traffic concerns for current and future uses. It would be prudent to wait and see what the state concludes from its study, and the infrastructure they plan to build should actually be built before a new car wash is constructed that impacts existing traffic. Give them conditional approval if you must, but we should really wait and see what the state's going to build on this site. Councilors, you have the authority, the vision, and the obligation to see Rocky Mountain's permit requests for what it is, an out-of-town's chain desire to make a buck in a city that's suddenly on everyone's lips. Please protect and preserve Whitefish's unique character, natural resources, and your own city operators, residents, business owners that live here with you, and decline Rocky Mountain's request. At least give it some more thought. At the very least, we ask that a comprehensive, all-inclusive traffic impact study be completed. As I said before, it took us years to get approval. Please don't rush this through. I hope that you've heard my message tonight, and I thank you very much for listening. I know it was lengthy. Thank you.
Thanks, Leah. Thanks, Dennis. Appreciate it. Did you have anything to add?
Hi, any further questions?
Any questions for Leah or Dennis at this point?
Nope. I did accidentally give you our five numbers.
Yeah, I haven't. Yeah, yeah. I was going to say, take your, take your data.
... you know, that shows our numbers are above 200.
Yeah. No, no problem at all. Thank you.
Passing out company secrets.
Further public testimony on this item. Michelle, anyone online? Doubtful?
There is not.
I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for a motion or discussion, whatever your desire is. Steve?
Just have a question for Dave. That's all right?
Of course.
Dave, how did we arrive at the fact that this wouldn't trigger a traffic study?
We based it on the, they had an engineer review the other one and provide a letter, and I let Craig review that, since I'm not a traffic expert and Public Works is. They didn't have any concerns. So, we accepted that it was under 200 vehicle trips per day and did not require a specific one, since there was a similar study provided with us, provided for us.
Okay. Maybe that's a better question for Craig, then?
Yeah, so, traffic engineers use what's called the ITE, Institution for Traffic Engineers' Trip Generation Manual, and car washes are very vague in that trip generation manual. And so, we go through a site review process where the developer comes in, shows us their plans, and we leave it up to the engineer to make a determination on the number of vehicle trips, the average number of vehicle trips per day. This one was trickier than most, you know? I mean, if it were a grocery store, or a hotel, or, you know, some other type of retail establishment- establishment, there's a lot of data, but on this one, we relied on data that was provided by the developer's engineer on a similar car wash that they own, I believe in Laramie, Wyoming, in a similar type of highway environment. That particular car wash generated more than 200 trips, but this one was a percentage smaller, and so, we did not require a specific traffic impact study for this particular building use. I can tell you, there was a traffic impact study that was done for the Snowy Mountain subdivision, you know, that we reviewed and approved, but given that this particular project has access to a signalized intersection and that we had information from the engineer showing less than 200 trips, we did not require a specific TIS.
Okay. And is it, I understand that residential generates new traffic trips, vehicle trips per day. Is there anything in that, in those standards, because I'm not an engineer, that reduces those number because it's rare that people go out specifically to wash their car? Like the applicant said, that it's more of a capture business than a new generation of trips business? Is there anything that guides you in that, in those standards, or is it just vague?
I think that you hit on exactly why it's so vague, is that typically, somebody doesn't wake up on a Saturday morning and say, "I'm gonna go to the car wash and then go home." And so, they are typically trips that are, you know, I forget exactly what the term...
Not new generation necessarily.
Yeah, exactly. Not a new trip generation, but I might refer to the engineer who wrote the letter if you want more description of how they came up with that analysis.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Giuseppe, and Rebecca, and then Ben.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following those questions, I went and reread the conditions of approval of the staff, and I just, clarification number, there is one that says that it needs, number eight, approval from the Architectural Review Committee. I know you presented it, but is it standard operating procedure that we require Architectural Review Committee approval before submitting an application for a...
Yep, that is standard approval. We generally put those in there anyway, just to remind people.
Okay, thank you.
Rebecca?
Craig, would you just explain about the access management plan? I know you gave the person that's working on it, at Robert Piesha, a little bit of input because I had spoke to her last week, but it's basically a master plan for as we grow. It's not necessarily anything that we're going to be working with soon, correct?
Yeah, I don't know if I can give a timeline on actual construction, but MDT is in the process of drafting an access management plan that goes all the way from Kalispell through Whitefish. All of the recommendations that I saw in that plan align with what we have in all of our plans, in our Transportation Master Plan, in our Safe Streets for All Plan, in our Connect Whitefish Bike and Ped Master Plan, and so, it does show medians being proposed, basically from Highway 40 to 13th Street, to restrict access primarily right in, right out, with some left-turn lanes. So, I can't tell you when there will be funding for that plan to go into effect, but it does show or align with, you know, what we have in our existing approved plans.
Thanks. I just wanted to reassure the audience that we were aware of it and we work with MDT on planning. All right, thank you.
Ben?
Craig, if, just to extend this conversation a little further, if a traffic study was to be done on a project such as this, do you think it would show adverse impacts in traffic flow in this area?
Wow, that's a tricky one. I don't know if I really want to speculate on that. I think if we were to do a full, or require a full, traffic impact study, there'd be a lot more data, you know, to be accumulated. You'd have to get turning movements from all the adjacent roadways and likely factor in what MDT is showing in their access management plan. So, yeah, for sure, there's a possibility, but, you know, based on what we saw from the engineer, it didn't trigger that traffic impact study. So, if it were to be a requirement of council, yeah, there is that possibility. I mean, this, you know, when we approved the Snowy Mountain subdivision, it included this geyser road along with the extension of Whitefish Avenue, which provides access to two signalized intersections. So, we reviewed the TIS for Snowy Mountain, and that was the required abatement, you know, for that project. So, and it included the, you know, the commercial lots that we're looking at right now.
Okay. Thank you.
This is not public comment. We closed the public hearing.
Commerce and JP Road.
Thank you, Craig. Steve? Take your time. Further questions or comments from the council? You must be back at school.
Yeah. Long day. There's no requirement currently for signage in the proposed development, correct, that says, "Hey, you're turning left, don't go this way, you gotta go this way." Is that, there's nothing in there, there's no conditions of approval for that kind of signage, correct? Obviously, it's not there, so...
Yeah, I mean, there's no, we didn't add a condition to that. I mean, you know, obviously, there are some people that aren't going to realize that Whitefish or Shiloh goes to a light, but I mean, if they're gonna turn right, they're just gonna go out on geyser, if they're gonna go left.
Right, but, yeah.
I mean, they could put a condition that they add a sign saying, "If you want to turn left on Highway 83, go, you know, back on Shiloh Avenue." I don't know.
Thank you.
I move to approve WCUP 25-08, approving Rocky Mountain Car Wash on behalf of Two North Partners LLC to operate a seven-bay car wash located on Commercial Lot 1 of Snowy Mountain Subdivision, Zoned WB2.
Is there a second to the motion?
I will second if for nothing else, discussion purposes.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Rebecca, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, I think all of my concerns were addressed at the Community Development Board. Unfortunately, we don't have the right to limit commerce, so it's always awkward when we have competing businesses in town, and traffic is a really big concern for everybody. But other than those two issues, which, one, we can't prioritize one business over another legally, and the second, we know we have traffic issues on Highway 93, and we have a transportation plan, and our staff works on it all the time, so I think it will be a nice addition for that side of 93, and I hope the other ones continue to prosper.
Further comments? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Thanks, everyone, for coming this evening. You guys want a five-minute break, or you good to go? We're gonna go ahead and just take a quick recess. We'll reconvene at 8:35, please.[1177.65]
It's a little hot in here, isn't it? Okay. All right, we're back in session here. We'll move on to item six C, consideration of a request from the city of Whitefish for a major variance to dredge a portion of the lake bed at the base of the existing boat ramp at Whitefish City Beach. Lauren, welcome back.
Hello again. So this evening, we have a major variance request for extending and reinforcing the existing boat ramp at City Beach. It would include modification of the lake bed elevation, excavation and fill below the ordinary high water mark, installation of asphalt surfacing and curbing within the lake shore protection zone, all of which are considered variance items, as well as standard permit request for tree removal, shoreline revegetation, installation of precast concrete slabs over crushed stone riprap foundation, and use of mechanical equipment. There have been quite a few permits issued in the past, including most recently, removal of the non-conforming boardwalk within the lake shore protection zone on that north end of City Beach, installation of a chain gate in 2017, addition of gravel landscaping in 2006. And also sand addition within 2000. Overall, the subject property has about 7,792 square feet of eligible construction area. The existing boat ramp measures approximately 165 square feet, as well as the asphalt surfacing, approximately 1,275 square feet. Overall, it is below the eligible square foot construction area, meaning that it can be further extended without variance for construction area. The boat ramp at City Beach has been experiencing extensive erosion due to boat propulsion, particular power loading during trailering, which generates strong undercurrents. This activity has undercut the base of the ramp, displacing lake bed sediment and significantly weakening the ramp's structural integrity. The current condition creates safety concerns for users and contributes to environmental degradation. To mitigate these, the city is proposing a project to reinforce the ramp, improve its durability, and ensure safe, long-term public access to the lake. To reinforce the boat ramp and stabilize the eroding lake bed, the applicant proposes to install precast concrete panels over a foundation of crushed stone riprap beneath the ramp. This will stabilize approximately 980 square feet of the submerged ramp base with an additional 400 square feet of riprap extending beyond to prevent future undercutting from boat propulsion. The goal is to provide a more durable ramp surface that can withstand heavy seasonal use and reduce the risk of trailers dropping off at the end during low water levels, which is increasingly becoming a common issue during late summers, summer launches. Approximately 202 cubic yards of lake bed material will be excavated and partially replaced, leaving a net reduction of 72 cubic yards. All excavation will be entirely removed, the site kept out of the lake shore protection zone. To perform this work, the applicant will install a temporary inflatable cofferdam enclosing 120 by 60, 50-foot area, allowing in-water construction to occur in dry conditions. The work is planned for October, when lake levels are the lowest in duration, which will keep as brief as possible to minimize disruption. Best practice managements will be used, including erosion control, contaminant measures, and will be used throughout the project to protect water quality and aquatic health. We ran our public noticing with notifying adjacent landowners on June 27th, as well as running a public notice in the Whitefish pilot for this meeting on August 6th. It was found that the major variance does comply with the criteria within the lake shore protection regulations. The site is, well, it's not a specific hardship. The variance is necessary to enable essential stabilization. Our regulations specifically say that dredging does require a major variance, so while the request itself usually wouldn't require such an item because our regulations stated outright, but they had to go through this process. We have gone to two other community hearings so far. The first one was held on July 9th for the Lake Shore Protection Committee. We received one public comment prior to the meeting from Mike Kupel expressing support for the project, as well as recommending modifications to conditions four, eight, and nine. No additional public comments were received at that time. Lake Shore Protection Committee unanimously voted to recommend approval for the project. As part of their recommendation, the committee modified three conditions in coordination with Mike Kupel. These included consolidations of conditions four, eight, and nine into a dedicated section addressing turbidity monitoring plan. A minor revision was also made to condition nine to clarify that turbidity thresholds should be based on natural background conditions as recommended by the Whitefish Lake Institute, based on historical data. On August 21st, the Community Development Board met for the second public hearing. No other members of the public spoke. It was voted unanimously to recommend approval with the 28 conditions as modified by the Whitefish Lake Shore Committee. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Lauren. Any questions for Lauren? Not seeing any. Thanks.
Thank you.
We did advertise for a public hearing on this item, and we'll hold that public hearing now. Brandon, do you have anything to add?
You know, I don't have anything to add, but I'm here to answer any questions.
I just had a quick question regarding permit requirements. You indicated there's two DEQ permits required, which I understand, but are we intending to submit for Army Corps as well?
And we did.
We did.
We obtained a 404 permit, and we got a de-watering permit and a 318 short-term turbidity permit. Floodplain development permit will be following this in the next couple of days.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Brandon from the council? Thanks, Brandon. Any public comment this evening? Michelle, anyone online? Go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council. Steve?
I move to approve WLV 25-01.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I think Rebecca got that one, seconded by Counselor Norton. I'll just comment real briefly that I've typically analyzed past dredging projects pretty closely, both when I was on the Lake Shore Committee, and there's always the question asked, well, how can the private-public sector do this and not allow the private to do a similar action, whether it's building a trail or dredging the lake? And just to, for the record, we do have precedence for private dredging projects in the past, both at Lazy Bay at the north end of the lake, as well as Bay Point. And I just, a bit of history here, I remember back in the day, I believe when I was on the Lake Shore Committee, the city used to actually replenish sand at City Beach annually. And a lot of that sand, based on how the lake-longshore currents were moving in the lake, either went to Moncks Bay, or they went into the river. So I'm certainly glad to see this project move through. This is our most heavily-used park, and it's a huge amenity to the city of Whitefish, so thanks for bringing this forward. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Which brings us to item six D, consideration of requests from Homeward Incorporated for the city to apply for a Montana CDBG housing grant fund for the rehabilitation of the Alpenglow Apartments located at 520, 524, and 526 Edgewood Place in Whitefish. Dana?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have my staff report in the packet on page 366. It's brief, and I'm going to be very brief because I'm going to turn it over to Homeward as part of this presentation, since they reached out to me last month. They're interested in a community development block grant that would fund critical repairs for the Alpenglow Apartments, which is a 38-unit apartment complex that provides affordable housing to or for our community. With a CDBG grant, you do have to have a governmental agency apply, but we can apply on behalf of a nonprofit or special purpose agency like Homeward. There are two public hearings required. Tonight would satisfy the first public hearing that would provide a forum for considering overall community needs and potentially competing or alternative proposals for the funding. I have had no requests from other agencies to apply for CDBG funds this year. A second public hearing is then held on the specific project and the application, which we would schedule at a later date, should you decide to move forward with this project this evening. There's no matching grant funds for the CDBG funds, and Homeward would be responsible for a lot of the application drafting and work. It'd be simply staff time that would help support this process. And if awarded the grants, obviously we have grant management and contract review that would take place for the city. CDBG funds are federal funds, but we would likely not hit the limit to require a federal audit. They've increased that from 750,000 in a year to, I believe it's a million now. And so that means there wouldn't be an impact to our audit costs as well. So with that, staff is respectfully recommending that you hold a public hearing, considering the overall needs for the community and the request on behalf of Homeward. And then as a second public hearing, if you desire to move forward, we would schedule that for September 15th. So Mayor, you can turn it over to Erin, or I'd be happy to turn it over to Erin to provide more detail on the actual project and the funding needs for this.
Great, I'll just go ahead and open the public hearing, and I would like to acknowledge Erin with Homeward. Thanks for attending tonight.
We can't hear you, hang on. We've got to figure out what's going on there.
Can you hear me now? Okay.
Just speak up a little bit, Erin, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I'll get closer. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Erin Ojala. I am the Asset Manager with Homeward, which is the managing general partner of Alpenglow Apartments. Thank you for holding this meeting and the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to respectfully request your support in our submission of the CDBG block grant application for Alpenglow in Whitefish. Alpenglow is home to 64 residents, working families, seniors on fixed incomes, and individuals with disabilities, all earning 60% area meeting income or less in a community where housing costs are among some of the highest. And so what we're challenged with right now is that we have some original heating and cooling systems that were installed during the construction of Alpenglow, but they are not operating as we were told they would be. They're inefficient in temperatures of 30 degrees or less, which is a lot of our winters. So these Friedrich variable refrigerant heat pumps, they just do not operate as efficiently for Montana winters. So over the years, they've caused a lot of problems. Condensation in the lines leads to leaking and freezing. It shuts down during some of the coldest weather, leaving some of the apartments without heat. And then the backup electric system drives up utility costs, which is passed on to the residents in a lot of cases and makes it hard for them. So, and then it's also resulting in frequent vendor and maintenance service calls and disruptions to the households' daily lives. So despite multiple repairs attempts and problem solving, it's just been persistent. So the only long-term, cost-efficient solution would be to replace these systems with a reliable, energy-efficient equipment that can handle our climate. So we're seeking to use the CDBG grant funds. This would allow us to make the replacements and improve the comfort and safety of our residents, reduce the utility costs, and extend the useful life of those systems. We are committed to putting in some match, even though it is not required. It would make our application more competitive, and as owners, you know, we are committed to preserving these properties, and so we would put in some kind of match. And this project directly supports the goals identified in the county and city planning documents, preserving existing affordable housing and improving energy efficiency while keeping vulnerable households safe and housed in the community. So I am here with my colleague Julie Steiler, who is on the development team, and we request that you, the county commissioners, sponsor our CDBG application and support our submission before the September 17th deadline. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks, Erin. Any questions for Erin? Rebecca?
Could you talk about the cost that you're anticipating and then the timeline for replacement, please?
Yeah, so this is, we've replaced these Friedrich heat pumps at another property, and so we're hoping to duplicate what we did at that property and install like, I think a magic pack is what it's called. I'm estimating that just the cost to do that would be around $138,000, $140,000.
How long will it take to replace them all?
Sorry about that. The CDBG grants usually want you to do the work within one year. So our goal would be to start doing it as soon as we can get an award letter, which usually, knowing that the grant deadline is September 17th, I would expect maybe here or back by October or November. And so then it would take maybe a month or so to sign a contract, and so at that point, we could actually start doing the RFP process and selecting a vendor. So our goal would be to have the project done by a year.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Not seeing any, thanks very much, Erin. Appreciate it. Thanks, Julie. We did advertise for a public hearing on item 60 of our agenda. Are there any public comments? Michelle, anyone online?
Anybody online who would like to speak towards this agenda item, please raise your hand. We're good.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council. Who would like to make a motion? Rebecca? Thank you.
I move to allow city staff to apply for Montana CDBG, a community development block grant for the rehabilitation of the Alpenglow Apartments HVAC units, I think, if that's what you call them, located at 520, 524, 536 Edgewood Place in Whitefish, Montana.
I would just qualify the motion, it's multiple improvements, not just the HVAC systems.
Oh, okay.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it, and I always wanted to be frank. I second it for sake of discussion. I don't know what that means, but I do it.
Seconded by Councilor Cal Tabiano. Rebecca, would you like to speak to your motion?
Nope, I'm just glad there's federal funding for this and that you're willing to do this. It's unfortunate, but I think it's important to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a p, no discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Thanks again, Erin. Thanks, Julie. We'll move on to item seven, communications from Maria, which is a consideration to award a contract for the City Beach Boat Ramp Extension and Boat Inspection Drive Lane. Maria?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know from item six C of this evening's agenda, the Parks and Recreation Department has been working on plans to extend the existing City Beach Boat Ramp and to widen the drive lane at the AIS Inspection Station. We advertised for bids in the Daily Interlake on August 10th and 17th for both of those projects. Both of those were identified as separate schedules, schedule one being the boat ramp, schedule two being the AIS loop. The bids were opened August 22nd at 10:00 a.m. in the City Council Conference Room. We received four bids for schedule one and five bids for schedule two. All bids were accepted. The engineer's estimate for schedule one was $118,237. The bids ranged from $136,837.56 to $390,210. The engineer's estimate for schedule two was $71,937.50. The bids ranged from $103,203.42 to $147,120. J.D. Thinning was the apparent low bidder for both schedule one and schedule two. There were some bid irregularities identified in J.D. Thinning's bid, but they were all minor rounding errors, and even with those rounding errors corrected, they still remained the apparent low bidder. They included a note on their schedule one official bid proposal document that stated, if both bids are awarded, the total price will be reduced by $40,000. Had to include $40,000 for insurance requirements. In speaking with J.D. Thinning, they explained that they included this statement because they needed to increase their current insurance limits to meet the project's requirements at a cost of approximately $40,000. Since they didn't know if they would be the low bid on schedule one, schedule two, or both schedules, they had to include $40,000 to cover their insurance on both schedules of the bid. So since they were the low bidder on both schedules, they are offering us a reduction of $40,000 because they only have to purchase the insurance once, if that makes sense. The certified bid tabulation is in your packet for your reference. Additionally, in speaking with J.D. Thinning regarding the timeline, they are dedicated to completing both schedules this fall instead of breaking the work up between fall and next spring. This will be less impactful to boaters who launch in the spring for dock installation, seasonal boat deliveries, and fishing access. There is a financial requirement to this, of course. The current overall project budget for FY '26 is $193,000. $120,000 of that is in the Parkland Acquisition and Development, and $73,000 of that is in the Parks Fund. The award of both schedules to J.D. Thinning under Thinning under one contract with the $40,000 reduction totals $200,040.98. J.D. Thinning's recommended total contract amount is 5.2% above the total engineer's estimate of $190,204.50 and is $7,042.98 greater than budgeted. The remaining $7,042.98 could require a budget amendment to the Parks Fund, but it's more likely that it's going to be offset with expenditure savings throughout the year. Based on available funding and project priorities, staff respectfully recommends the City Council award the City Beach Boat Ramp Extension and AIS Drive Lane bids to J.D. Thinning for a total contract amount of $200,040.98, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Maria. Any questions for Maria on her staff report? I would entertain a motion, please. Steve?
I move to award the contract for City Beach Boat Ramp Extension to J.D. Thinning.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Counselor Cal Tabiano. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign and that motion does carry unanimously. Which brings us on to item 8A, consideration to award the contract for the Monigan Road Reconstruction Project, which will be Phase 2. Craig?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. One more project with two more schedules. So Phase 1 of the Monigan Road Reconstruction Project was completed in the fall of 2019. Since then, we have been working with an adjacent landowner to Phase 2 to acquire a 10-foot strip of land that's necessary to reconstruct the roadway. This 10-foot section of roadway essentially encroaches onto private property as a result of the county adding gravel to that section of Monigan Road over the last several decades. Unfortunately, we've been unsuccessful in negotiating with the landowner, and so we're now working with Flathead County on a process called Recognition of County Road Route by District Court. This is a Montana code that the county has used in the past for sections of roadway that are established but do not fall within the right-of-way. So the process does require a publicly noticed court hearing, which has been scheduled for October 7th of this year. In an issue, in a, in an effort to essentially at least get part of the roadway done, given the current bidding environment, we did go ahead and bid the project, but we did bid it in two different schedules. So the first schedule, which we have the right to build, is essentially 16 feet of Monigan from the park shop to the edge of, the southern edge of the wastewater treatment plant. If awarded, we'll complete that this fall. The second schedule is that remaining 700 feet of JP Road. Depending on what happens with the court proceedings in October, we could either complete that this fall or next spring, or not at all if we don't get that favorable judgment. We did open bids for the project on August 22nd. We had three bids that were received, and Knife River was the lowest responsible bidder at $938,904.50. This is 15% below the engineer's estimate of, that's wrong, of 1.0, basically 1.1 million. We do know that Knife River is a reputable firm. They've completed numerous successful projects of similar size and scope for the city, and we did budget $1.3 million for the project in fiscal year '26. That comes from the gas tax, gas tax fund, stormwater fund, and the street fund. It is my recommendation that council accept the bids and award the project to Knife River in the amount of $938,904.50.
Thanks, Craig. Any questions for Craig? I would entertain a motion. Frank?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to award or direct the city manager to accept the bids and receive the, award the project to Knife River in the amount of $938,904.50.
Thanks, Frank. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Cornell. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. Thanks, Craig. We'll stay with Craig and move on to Resolution 25-30, accepting a dedication of Colner Lane.
Okay. So for those of you that aren't familiar with Colner Lane, it's a 2,000-foot roadway in the southeast corner of Whitefish. The 60-foot wide right-of-way is currently owned and maintained by Flathead County. Although the roadway does provide access to several large parcels in the county, the majority of the traffic on Colner is ingress and egress from the River Lake subdivision and Montero, and the county has wished to transfer ownership to the city for quite some time. While there will be no financial implications on the city to maintain Colner Lane, excuse me, there will be financial implications on the city to maintain Colner, the roadway is directly adjacent to an existing plow route in River Lakes and will not add a significant burden to that plow driver. In addition, the county did just complete an asphalt overlay on Colner Lane, and the pavement is not expected to require significant repairs for the foreseeable future. Staff has reviewed the quick claim deed that was prepared by Flathead County and does recommend accepting ownership and approval of the resolution.
Thanks, Craig. Any questions? Motion? Ben?
I would move to accept the dedication of Colner Lane.
Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Norton. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign and that motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to item 9, communications from Dana, our city manager. You have Dana's report enclosed with the packet. Any questions for Dana?
Just a comment. Nice picture with you getting that ribbon.
It was a fun event. Really, really nice family, and the Japanese consulate, if I'm not mistaken, attended as well. So it was, it was really neat. And plus all the, most of the Parks employees, I believe, were in attendance as well, including Maria. So thanks again to the family for the generous donation, and to BNSF for that matter. Dana, anything to report on?
Yeah, I just have one thing, just for those viewing our live stream on YouTube, and we will get some information out about this before the next meeting. With, during COVID, we ended up moving to having a remote option to participate. One of the challenges we're having with our new system and just the running these meetings is having two live streaming options at the same time. So we will be eliminating the YouTube live stream. Anybody can watch the council meeting in real time by joining Zoom, and then later on we'll upload the recording to our YouTube channel. But that is one of the challenges with this system is trying to run two live streaming at the same time. YouTube's also a bit delayed from the regular Zoom meeting, and so that's one of the easiest solutions we've tried to come up with, with making this an easier system to operate for our operators and, and the public in general to have an opportunity to be able to provide comment, whereas YouTube does not provide that. So at our next council meeting, we will be eliminating the YouTube live stream, but we will get notice out and it will be noticed properly on the agenda as well.
Thanks, Dana. Frank?
Dana, just to, the council, or the council meeting and the community development board meetings will ultimately be available on YouTube.
Correct.
Just not on a live basis. It'll be posted as...
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, and so what's going to happen is we'll actually run a Zoom meeting during even the planning board meeting, not necessarily for remote participation, but it records it. And so the issue with recordings not occurring, this will make sure that we have that recorded, and then later on we can upload to YouTube. No other city is doing both live streaming, actually, to my knowledge, so this just eliminates something that we did pre-COVID, and then we added additional during COVID times, so this will make it cleaner, and I think the public will eventually understand how to use our system again.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Dana?
Not this evening.
Okay, you do have a letter enclosed in the packet from Ann Moran. Any comments on that letter?
I would only say, I think Ann used great judgment in having a 92-pound German Shepherd with her. I own, I own one, and I think there is never a better option.
Rebecca?
Yeah, I did call her just to check on her because she sounded a little upset. I know she talked to Bridger, I think, afterwards. Is there anything you wanted to say, Bridger?
No, I appreciate her support. She was very happy to see the officers arrive to the scene while she was still walking home, and officers took care of the situation immediately.
We'll start with counsel, or we'll end with counselor comments. Rebecca, would you like to start tonight?
We also got an email from Chris Kremel about e-bikes and scooters, and I responded to that and told, I mean, the kids are kind of getting out of control and a little bit rude. And, and so I don't know, I, I know we're working on that, and in October, I think, is when we're going to hear back about regulations. He said that some states have actually outlawed them on trails, so, but he had a really close call and then a not very friendly response when he told them to stop it, but same thing happened to me, actually, when I asked young ladies to slow down. So I think it, I'm really glad that we're working on it. I just really, once again, really happy with J.D. Thinning's work along the river. They finished the steps at Kitty Park, I mean, and it's just beautiful. So thank you again, Maria.
Where's Kitty Park?
Well, okay, maybe that's not what we call it. What do we call it?
It actually has three names, Kitty Park, Baker Park, or Kate Patterson Park.
Oh, I never knew that.
It's all the same, yeah.
Yeah.
It's technically called Baker Park.
Okay, thanks. It's...
I didn't know that.
Yes, sorry.
Oh, I thought you said, I thought you said like kitty as in cat.
No, but there's a, there's a dock down there, and the stairs were quite treacherous. My dog likes to go down there, so it's really just beautiful work, really beautiful stonework, and I think every time people walk by now in my neighborhood, they stop and say, "When did this happen?" It's just stunning. So thank you again for doing that this year.
Thanks, Rebecca. Ben?
No comments.
Thank you. Frank?
I'd just like to add a, a note of defense, if I will, for the Community Development Board. I ask us all to understand that that group has undertaken an incredibly difficult and important job, and I think some of the interruptions or the problems or delays are because they know, they know, and we all know, that once that plan is completed, community input and control essentially goes away. And so to the extent you've got a group that is paranoid, I think for good reason. I think we all are. And so I hope we'll all give them some grace as we go forward to understand that they're not trying to obstruct anything. They're actually just trying to make sure they get it right because they only get one shot at it. So I offer that, not just so much as in their defense, but to ask us all to think through exactly the job that we've given them and how difficult it is. With that, I have nothing further. Thanks.
Good point, Frank. Thanks. Steve?
I just want to ask Maria, since Marty stuck out this whole meeting, is it possible to do some sort of daycare for these upcoming meetings? Have we done that in the past? What might it look like if we did?
Yeah, so on the break, Dana and I actually talked about that, and we're going to ask some of our after-school counselors if they, they would be willing to take on a little bit of extra time for those dates and see if we could provide some care.
Okay. So like a movie in one of the conference rooms downstairs or something like that?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we'll see how many people show up, and if, if we get a good turnout, then it's something we can probably continue, right?
That's, it is something that we'll have to discuss as far as budgetarily, being able to continue to offer that and when we would want to do that and everything, but that's certainly something that we can discuss, for sure.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks for bringing it up, Marty. And then the only other thing I have to say is that school's back in session, so watch out for kids in the roadways, on bikes, and unfortunately, there are going to be a lot of them driving those really fast scooters to and from school until Bridger goes to school and tells them how to behave again.
We've already told them they can't.
What's that?
We've already told them when they cannot. Those electric motorcycles are not legal to be on any public way in the city limits of Whitefish. They're for private property and off-road use only, and our school resource officers are on top of it.
Okay. I, I did, just as anecdotally, I was, I was riding back from the reservoir trail and I got passed by, this was just Sunday, yeah, Sunday, two kids on those bikes. They had pedals, but they were going 30 miles an hour at least coming down the hill, and I, I know that, again, we can make whatever rules we want, enforcement is the issue. Can't stop and like, you know, get their name and number and stuff.
And the pedals, those things will change with the new ordinance.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Giuseppe?
I think Counselor Cornell is just jealous that two younger people passed him, that's all. Thank you, Marty, for staying. No further comments.
Thanks, Giuseppe. I just wanted to let you know, Dave, I think Lauren's doing an awesome job, you know, with planning, and just to extend on our behalf, a good, a job well done, and I appreciate her being here tonight, so, thanks very much. On that note, thanks, everyone. We are adjourned.